For your goodness and all your mercy, oh God, because you've been so good and you've been so kind, oh God. I thank you, oh God, hallelujah, how you lead and I was sitting directing our mayor. Lord, we give you glory this afternoon. We give you honor and we give you praise because it's in your name, oh God, that we live and move and have our being. And Lord, continue to take care of police officers, continue to take care of our ambulance. Lord, continue to take care of our firefighters, oh God. If they go out to and for these emergencies, Lord, we thank you, oh God. We bless your holy name this evening, oh God. We give you glory this evening. We give you honor and we give you praise, oh God. Thank you for life on today, God. Glory to your name, Jesus. I bless your holy name, oh God. Glory to your name, Lord, and we thank you right now, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen and praise God.
Calling is mean to order. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as presented.
Second. You know, I got a motion in second. All of them pay by. Oh, so go ahead.
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
Counselor Kat. Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Holt. Counselor Hutchinson. Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Mohammed.
Present.
Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
Counselor Pulliam.
Here.
Counselor Willis.
Here.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Eight out of 10.
We got a call being present. Um, no corrections to the minutes. I got a motion in second. Hearing none. All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, that those passes. So let's see that turn over old business.
It's an ordinance to designate five most public places to post written or printed notices for the publication of any law or ordinance of the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
Make a motion. We put it on this third and final reading.
Second. All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. City Attorney.
An ordinance to designate five most public places to post written or printed notices for the publication of any law or ordinance of the city of West Memphis and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. All right, Mr. City Clerk, will you get out that ordinance a number, please?
Yes, sir. That ordinance number will be two, five, five, four.
Two, five, five, four. City Attorney.
Wait a minute. I've got a, um...
Do we need to amend that title?
Amendment title, yeah. Would it need to read?
Uh, here's what the amended would be. Um, this is the amendment I'm requesting. An ordinance adopting a revitalization, reinvestment, and redevelopment plan for the city of West Memphis in order to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Can I make a motion? We push that.
Get a second.
Second.
All of them pay by. Oppose.
All right. An ordinance adopting a revitalization, reinvestment, and redevelopment plan for the city of West Memphis in order to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the community.
That was a second reason to be back in two weeks for a third reading. City Attorney.
An ordinance to abolish ordinance number twelve eighty-eight and to establish residential and commercial curbside garbage pickup of bagged garbage waste and refuse.
I make a motion. We put it on the third and final reading.
Second. All of them pay by. Oppose.
All right. Now, I want to say something about this before we put it on a third and final reading. I mentioned last time requiring some changes on this as well. If you'll look on the last page, there's no signature lines for the mayor or the city clerk, so that would have to be added to the ordinance. That would be an amendment to the...
Well, we can just wait on amendment then. I mean, I was just trying to get it because we were trying to...
It's by September the first and then it means September the third, so...
Well, read that amendment again.
Uh, the amendment is only that there's no signature line for the mayor.
I'll make a motion that we add it to, you know, to the ordinance.
All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. Amendment passed.
An ordinance to abolish ordinance number twelve eighty-eight and to establish residential and commercial curbside garbage pickup and bag garbage waste and refuse.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
Uh, were there any discussion?
I have one. Uh, one of the things that I would like for us to do as well, and, um, you know, do a little bit more communication with our citizen as well, so they will truly understand. I mean, I'm just saying, put it on our website, try to do some more, uh, uh, door hangers or whatever, so everyone would know. I'm just saying, they would understand what they have to do, because I think, uh, well, some people have talked to me and say that they didn't get the information. I know we was putting it in the bills and doing some things, but can we just do that again? And not only that, just put some door hangers. If we come up with some door hangers to put on as well, just let them know the steps that they got to follow.
Sure.
We also, and then that this starts September.
Well, that's what I'm saying, with something with all that on it. That's what I'm saying.
Ms. Mohammed?
Right. Now, we are abolishing ordinance number twelve eighty-eight. It's for the public. We kind of explain what is it that we are abolishing and what is it that we are bringing into effect?
City Attorney.
Well, I mean, I haven't looked at twelve eighty-eight before I came to this meeting, and I didn't prepare this ordinance, uh, so I'm not going to sit here and tell you exactly what twelve eighty-eight says.
Well, basically, what is abolishing is we going from backyard service to curbside service.
Right.
And the difference is, we asking all of our citizens to bring their garbage out on their day to the curbside of the street.
Now, that's going to be starting on what day?
September first.
On September first. Now, I think there has been some confusion about the curbside garbage pickup. I know someone told me that, that we were going to start picking up the garbage and trash on the same days, but I know nothing like that has really come through from the work and the two city councils there. Anything, any... I know we had a little bit of discussion like that, but nothing has been...
Ms. Mohammed, I don't know where that come from.
I don't know either.
Because the council, the mayor, or the commission, I mean, we have discussed it, but I don't know how to public.
Well, it did not, I know everything. That's why we have committees, because everything has to come through a committee approved by that committee. They refer it to the council. I don't know how it became discombobulated like that. I know my garbage is usually picked up on Mondays, and it did not get picked up today until Thursday, which is my trash pickup date. Why that was, maybe the mayor behind or something of that nature.
We administered it and we fixed that, but we haven't changed.
Well, somebody's really messed something up because people are confused right now. If you don't know factually what's supposed to be done, please don't put it out there publicly, because once the word get out, it confuses everybody, and that's something that you don't know. Because I knew that, being chair of Public Works, nothing had come through Public Works pertaining to that. I know that we had had a little bit of discussion concerning it, but discussing and passing are two totally different things. So this is going to start on September first, and we're going to ask that people pour their, uh, garbage to the curb. And another thing I would like to say that is we got those cans, and we thank everybody, uh, city council, mayor, everyone who made all of this possible. But now, a lot of people, uh, when the cans came and were placed in the front of the sidewalk, most of them are still sitting there. And I just want to make it clear that you're not supposed to leave them there. I guess effective in September, you're going to have to pull them back to your backyard, to your side yard, or something of that nature, because that is not an attractive look. The cans are nice, they're clean, but just having them sitting there, it's not a very attractive look at all, because you got those beautiful new cans sitting there with all those old nasty cans. And to me, it just really takes away from the appearance of what we are trying to do as far as keeping West Memphis beautiful. And I just wanted to say that, and I found all of the ones who have really pulled theirs back as they should have been. So I just wanted to kind of make that clear, because there was a lot of confusion.
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons why I'm saying, you know, if we take, afford the education part of this and kind of work through it, still use the utility bills, uh, get us some door hangers and put them on, you know, just make sure. And also on the website as well. So I'm, to me, I just think that, uh, you know, trying to get everything in place is good, but at the same time, I just think we need to put a little bit more education out there, and I think everything rolls smoothly after that.
I agree definitely with you all. I mean, from my administrative staff, we've been having it in the, uh, your man, in your utility bills. I'm sure you have seen it. It's on the internet, so I, I don't know who said that we doing it that way. I don't know where that come from.
Well, I have. In the war, for, there, Thursday is our garbage pickup.
Yeah. Trash.
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 Okay, now, my garbage, there are three different, uh, days that I'm aware of, because mine, both of mine, I picked up on Thursday. And then farther on down is Tuesday and Thursday, and then Tuesday and Monday or so. There are three different dates for those.
Well, you know, they pick up garbage. Garbage has certain routes, and it's been going on for thirty years now, and I ain't understand it, but you know, you may have Suda Lane, Ingram, um, South McCallum, all of them picked up on one day garbage. I don't know why it been done that way, but it's where it has been done for years. And those are the things that we may have to look at changing, but I'm just saying, because we have in place this administration, and nor have I heard the council change it, so whoever put that out there was someone else.
I think we'll get some consistency as we roll along.
Yeah.
Like, that's exactly what we need, so people can know exactly what they're doing.
And that's true, because Mr. Bonner, I mean, he's working very hard, and I think just through trial and error, he can pretty much, I'm quite sure, we probably see quite a few changes, you know, along the way, you know, in trying to get this, you know, get, get the citizen activated to it as well. So it's going to be a trial and error, so you know.
When, when can the physically challenged or the handicapped apply for some kind of assistance to get their trash can moved to the front?
Well, we working on that part right now, so they can actually start to call us now, so...
You got senior, you got some senior adults too that are not able to...
Now, let me, let me, I want to be absolutely clear now with this. Because you're a senior, that don't mean you can't move your, your garbage. And you, my father's sixty-nine, but he faithfully puts aside the rope. Give him, if you disabled.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Then, you know, for some reason, then, you know, and I mean, being disabled won't, won't determine if you're a senior citizen by age. You can be forty-five, and you just say, you've been disabled in a way. We'll come up and do that for you.
No, there's a, there's a distinguishing difference between the two.
Yeah, someone that can do it for you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It passes. Will you give that ordinance a number, Mr. City Clerk?
That ordinance number will be two, five, five, five.
Two, five, five, five. All right. City Attorney.
This is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at eleven oh five Balfour, permitting a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot-tall communications tower in a R-one single-family residential district.
Be back on agenda in two weeks for a third reading. Councilman Pulliam, new business.
Excuse me?
New business.
Councilman, new business.
Okay, we're going to, you want to go ahead and add that, what?
City Attorney, request.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just be, uh...
Okay, okay, yeah, okay. Um, on the O-one, R-one and O-one, I make a motion we read by title only.
Want to get a motion?
Second.
All of them pay by. Oppose. It's added. We read those by title only. City Attorney?
Resolution providing for the creation of the Grass Maintenance and Building Demolition Department within the Public Works Department of the city of West Memphis.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir. Please explain for the public what, what that resolution is all about.
What that resolution is about, when the council asked me to reduce the sanitation, what we done in reducing those numbers, we created a grass cutting department and a, uh, housing demolition that turned some of down. Some of these have vacant homes that met the criteria to be torn down. And basically, what we done, we took people from that, we are going to take people from that department once you all purchase the proper equipment that we need and start that department, where we become many of our lots. We won't cut all our lot. We still will contract some lots out, because like at the airport, there's some lots that we can't cut because we don't have the special equipment. And abandoning, tore down, how dilapidated houses, we have been to tear many more down besides with community development, by grant money. So that's what that department will start. It will also be up under Public Works once it is created.
Now, now, once it's created, depending on further than we have this today, when do you think you may start utilizing that department? Will it be next year since the sum is far spent already?
It will be.
And perhaps we'll have the equipment. How are we going to purchase that equipment? Have we gone through the, um, budget committee to discuss all of those?
In that work session that we had, I know you was at the dock there.
Right.
At that work session, we talked about a one-point-five-million-dollar line of credit, about the three trucks that were purchased to side unloaders, as well as the excavator and the moors that we need for the, for this, uh, department. But the department went starting till next year.
Hopefully, we'll get a lot of these lots and all this tall grass cut down next year.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, and I would like to direct it to Paul, if he's still here.
Paul still here?
Paul, Paul, when the demolition houses, demolition, uh, house, uh, the, uh, the lot, should it be leveled so you can cut the grass on it, or you, or you just leave it, just, just?
It's in the demolition contract that they have to bring dirt in and level the lot. And then we inspect it.
They're, they're, they're...
Now, it's not tabletop smooth.
They won't, they won't make it as smooth as the floor, but they...
I, I, listen to you. I'm just saying, being able to cut your grass after, with a lawn mower.
Should be able to, should be able to cut the grass.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah, okay, okay.
And they are going to clean it up after you cut it, right?
Sure.
Well, that, okay.
Yeah, well, you know, we, we got, we have some lots that are not like that, and, uh...
You have to send them back sometimes to make them regrade.
Okay, all right, all right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is why I hope with this department, we have been, since we doing it, we have been able to tear it down and clean it up and then cut it right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It passes. Will you give that resolution a number?
Yes, sir. The resolution number will be twenty-two forty.
Twenty-two forty. O-one.
O-one is an ordinance waiving competitive bidding for slip lining work for the sewer line on South Wood Street in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
May I make a motion, put it on for a second reading?
Second. All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. City Attorney.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for slip lining work for the sewer line on South Wood Street in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
I further suspend the rules. I get a motion in second to place on the third reading. All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding for slip lining work for the sewer line on South Wood Street in the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
I get a motion in second to approve.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Uh, we'll win over this, whether it's in pre-council. Hearing none. All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It passes. Will you give that ordinance a number?
Yes, sir. That'll be two, five, five, six.
Two, five, five, six. This was also added to the, uh, agenda. This was the rejection request. Don't see that turn.
Yes, uh, and this will be by motion, uh, and what this is, is, uh, we have a demand that was made upon us in one of our lawsuits that, uh, has, is very, in very early stages. Uh, because it's in the very early stages, that means that the municipal league is, uh, representing us with reservation of right, and, and what that means is until they develop the case to determine that we have full coverage, which means that we would have ninety percent covered by the municipal league, until they do that, we have no coverage, and we will be paying out the full amount of any settlement. So I am recommending that we reject and make no counteroffer to this demand that was made upon us.
May I make a motion that we reject any, any offer at this time?
Second. Uh, any discussion?
For municipal league as well.
All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. We reject that demand level. Permission request. Earlier, we talked to ASU about actually waiving the, um, the requirement, especially use permit.
May I make a motion? We grant them the use, uh, because at this point in time, the extenuating circumstances that, uh, that, you know, that pushing for time, and so that I, the children would have a place to go to school. Uh, grant them the, uh, six, you know, like, they say four months, but I like to grant them six months, so therefore, they have plenty of time, temporary, not permanent, so you know.
Uh, let me, let me do this first. I guess for proper protocol. Can you make a motion in second, just to add it to the agenda?
Okay, I add it to the agenda. I thought it was added.
Yeah, it was.
Yes, it was added.
It was added when he first did it.
Yeah.
You get it, Ms. Lan?
No. No.
Well, I make a motion, we're at, I mean, we make...
All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It's added.
Again, I make, I make a motion that, uh, we grant the special permitted use, uh, under extenuating circumstances. Uh, give them, I mean, I know they say four months, but I like to give them six months in, uh, you know, temporarily, and so they can fulfill their obligation to serve our children.
Second.
I second it.
Any discussion? All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. It passes. You all can use it. Also have a permission request. I would like to get permission from the council. I want to, um, add five hundred dollars of my stuff in our contribution funds to DSO Bones, nonprofit organization, so I can help them out. This is senior citizen, um, facility that they doing helping with needs for the senior citizens. And it's called DSO Bones.
Approve. Second.
Approve it.
All of them pay by.
Aye.
Oppose. All right. Community reports, utility.
Recap of the West Memphis Utility Commission on August the thirteenth, twenty-twenty. The West Memphis Utility Commission met in regular session on this date at eight-thirty P.M. Safety Director Brett Samms reported that there were one-hundred-and-forty-nine days since last recordable injury, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight days since last lost time injury, zero recordable injury for the month of July. General Manager Todd Peterson represented, presented the personnel update. He stated that there were four new hires and one voluntary resignation for the month of June. The utility currently has ten open positions. The fourth item on the agenda was bid opening for station number nine. This was presented by engineer A.J. He presented two bidders, Landmark Construction and Chris Hill Construction. He recommended the low bid from Landmark Construction in the amount of seven-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars. Motion passed unanimously. The fifth item on the agenda was, agenda was approval for the creation of environmental specialist job, and no budget amendment is needed. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. Motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda was, agenda was the approval to hire Fisher and Arnold for designing, designs of W W T P. This was presented by General Manager Todd Peterson. He presented the agreement between the West Memphis Utility Commission and Fisher and Arnold Incorporated for the scope of service for the wastewater treatment facility expansion. He also stated that according to the consent administrative order, plan we have until December the thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three to get the project completed, and the motion passed unanimously. The last item on the agenda was slip lining for sewer lines, south, superline, sewer line for South Wood Street wastewater budget. This was presented by Assistant General Manager Ward Wimbish. He is requesting permission to ask city council to waive competition, competitive bidding and award the work to lining and coating solutions. The base quote was sixty-nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, and depending on how many service connections we must line, the cost could be as much as a hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. Motion passed unanimously to, to forward to city council. Thank you.
You said, Paul, you didn't have...
I do, I do, and I do have my, my report for the public as well. First, I'll be required.
You're for her first, Michelle.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
The fire commission met Tuesday, August eleventh, at twelve P.M. We do have several vacancies within the fire department, one fire chief position, two firefighter E M two positions, firefighter paramedic, two firefighter paramedic positions, three single-row paramedic positions are open, and also one single-row paramedic resigned. One, we did have one resignation. We have, we have no one to retire. We have, we have several personnel in training, and we are continuing to certify our new personnel with minimum standards training, and incumbent, uh, person, personnel are involved in professional development training. EMS, uh, EMS collections for the year to date is two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and fifty-one cent. Year-to-date budget as of five thirty-one is twenty-five, they believe it is twenty-five point thirty-six percent for supplies and services, and thirty-nine point forty-nine percent for salaries and benefits. That ends my report for the fire commission. Our public works department, I haven't had a chance to look over it. It was just handed to me, but in that report, uh, the overlay, overlay projects are going as scheduled. The fleet report, front end loads, we had three operational on the day we had this meeting. There were nine down. The rear end loads, we had four operational with one down. Grapple truck, there were six operational with, uh, one down, with zero down, and one on the garbage was down. Uh, the engineers report, Miss Amanda gave a beautiful report. Everything is on schedule. We did introduce our new code enforcement officer, Mr. Bonner, and I think he's really doing a beautiful job, and we're going to ask him to continue to stick with us. We're going to be, okay, just stick with us. So that's going to end my report, and thank you also very, very much.
I have one question in reference to the, um, ambulance. Uh, oh, Ms. Tori, are we up from last month with that?
Ms., uh, please, I have not had a chance to look at it. I don't know off the top of my head. I'll let you know.
A M P?
Okay, well, I don't actually have the official report. I'll do that next, but I'll just let you know that, um, the A M P commission yesterday, they, uh, graciously, uh, voted to allow our citizen of West Memphis, well, I say citizen of West Memphis, but allowed the city clerk to be, the county court clerk to, uh, have a voting, uh, place here in West Memphis, so they could do early voting, if they, so.
I would like to piggyback on my report and like to say that the Barton Street project has been finished with sidewalks and everything, and also, we do have one, um, traffic sign there that, that Mr. Mary was able to get there. I think it's on Barton in that alley. We have two, uh, traffic signs stating that the speed limit is what, like, thirty miles per hour? I always thought it was thirty-five. I've been speedy.
Senator Collins?
We met by Zoom last Thursday, and I'm going to give it to you as I remember it, but, uh, it was a very small output of members. Pandemic seemed like the numbers are down in most of... And the only thing that was, uh, significance during the meeting was that a COVID-nineteen budget was compared to the actual budget for, uh, twenty through twenty-one, and that, I'll bring the notes.
That concludes? That concludes?
Who's my, my?
Did Parks meet?
No, Mr. Parker, he just returned, so we'll meet next month.
Okay. Is there more on the community, say where I'm at? I had no appointments, I had an announcement. Councilwoman Hutchinson wanted to thank you all, and for your support, prayers and condolences during the time in need. She says she's getting herself back together right now from the passing of her father. She just wanted to thank you all, you all, prayers and support as well. I want to thank you all for the support of all of our individuals that we love, from Mr. Stokes, Mr. Lewis, everyone, so just want to say thank you all, and I'm sure that their families, truly appreciate it, and definitely keep their families in your prayers. Also today, also today, we had a very good meeting today, well, not meeting, but City of West Memphis partnered with the eight, not eighteen, I'm sorry, partnered with T-Mobile, Sure Collaborative, and what we done, and we got out, and we done census, as well as T-Mobile offers some services from their own hotspots as well, provided internet service so that the census could be done on phones and tablets, as well as Sure Collaborative, they gave over a thousand masks, sanitizer, and different P P Es, and we was able to give our citizens and their children face masks, sanitizer, and whatever they pretty much needed during this COVID-nineteen, it was a great success. We're gonna continue to do another one again, because the census is in, I think, September the thirty-first, that's correct date, the end of September, so definitely want to take advantage of that, you know, right now, they say we at fifty-one percent, and it's still low right now, so hopefully we working to get those numbers up, because we definitely want to be counting those census numbers, determine so many funding avenues for our city, our schools, the whole nine yards. We definitely make sure we take advantage of probably five, six-minute project, process. If you haven't done it, you can go to www dot twenty twenty census dot gov, fill the values, unless you got individual coming to the house, as well, I'm sure that many of you all probably have gotten that, it's on the census, so just take the opportunity to fill those things out, so that we can continue out with the street. I had no more than announcements, I got two census requests. Last, Mr. Donald Ramsey, if he's here, will he come forward? Mr. Donald Ramsey. All right. Second on there, we have Ms. George McChristine. I think to hold this seat for a little time, and set the rules on the five minutes, get your name and your address, and come forward.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I've never talked through a mask before. Today, I come as an advocate for my daughter, and I think all of you have your pictures in front of you, you can see a violation. The code says that it cannot be twenty-five feet before, off the, off the road. The first day I was in office, I haven't been, it's been since nineteen eighty-two, I looked at the stationary, and I want you to tell you what it said, and I want us all to try to get there. The fastest-growing town in eastern Arkansas, and I believe with all the good things that are happening now, all the schools building up, everything that this council has gotten together to, for, for all, anybody that wants to move to West Memphis wouldn't move anyplace else if they saw everything that was going on. And I come to ask you to enforce the ordinance, to keep the tour bus, did all of you see the tour bus on there, and to keep that all, to move it. I've been working almost, over, almost two years, and we've had no success, and I have Anita Bell here, who is outstanding and award-winning realtor, and she's gonna tell you some of the things about the property and the devaluation of the property.
Thank, thank you. First of all, I want to say this, I've been here before, I think, and number one, I'm a third-generation West Memphian. I've lived through Ms. Joyce's wonderful mayoral tenure, and I've got two generations coming up behind me that live here, and my concern is, we have a number of ordinances, and it seems like that these ordinances, either the code enforcement guys go out, there's not anybody home, I understand, but I would think that code enforcement possibly should be there when people get home from work, not, not necessarily when they're, they're at work. But it seems to be, to me, a little breakdown between somebody complaining, I guess, if you will, and then a court, something being done. Seems like it takes a long, long time. But one of my concerns, as a citizen and as a businessperson here, is showing property, and I may have said this before, but I find it difficult more and more to find a place to tour through West Memphis that doesn't have debris, doesn't have mattresses or couches or whatever that are out in the yard, and I commend you all for getting, as Joyce did, the businesses, the Carvana and all these others, but we need people to live here. We need house tops, we need citizens to get involved that are, that are brand-new in the community. And the, I know the mayor has a task force looking into the possibility of building, which I commend you for that as well. But I had a few statistics that Joyce wanted me to present. Right now, in the city of West Memphis, we have twenty-five active listings. The average sales price is a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars. In Marion right now, and I'm just gonna compare this with Marion, because that seems like who we lose everybody to, there are twenty-two listings, and the average sales price is two hundred and fifty-one thousand, fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Last year, the, there were a hundred and forty-seven units, now this is through our multiple listing, a hundred and forty-seven units sold, the average sales price in West Memphis was a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and thirty-three dollars. In Marion, last year, there were a hundred and fifty-seven homes sold, and the average price was a hundred and eighty-six thousand. So we've got, we're dwindling down on our, on our property values, and I just, I, I feel like we got, and I don't know the answer, I've worked with Lorraine before on our, keep, keep West Memphis beautiful, and I commend her for doing that, but it's gonna take more than once or twice a year, so thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Should I say that there might be a solution by getting the code delivered to each citizen once a year, maybe by, on the utility bill, or perhaps giving this gentleman the addresses for the parking lots, and, yeah. They have that, did they get that?
Where you can park things.
Thank you very much for listening to us. We're very hopeful that everything happens good in West Memphis, it's already started.
Thank you.
Ms. Bell? Ms. Bell?
First of all, I'd like to say that I personally have dealt with this situation, and I never did request her to come up here, but I'm glad you came up here, you're always welcome. I wanted, I wanted to share something with most people in here that probably don't know, this lady's the reason why we have the low utilities we've got today. It was her administration that pushed for the utilities in this town that we're living with right now. And I'm like her, we all together on this, we want to see the city clean up, and we're gonna clean it up. Just gonna take a little time, we're gonna get to it. Your ordeal looks pitiful over there, I know. Thank y'all for coming.
And I want to say something that most people didn't know, Mrs. Joyce, used to be Ferguson, was my boss, right here at this city hall of some years ago, when I was working out in the information desk, my very first job in the city of West Memphis. She was my boss, and was a very wonderful young lady to work for.
Yeah, I'm gonna say another thing about Ms. Joyce, she's, I actually wanted, we're enjoying low utility rates now.
Ms. Bell? Ms. Bell?
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
In your statistics and your fact-finding, did you, were you able to determine how many permits were pulled in West Memphis for new housing, and how many in Marion's been pulled?
I did not, because that wouldn't be an M L S, and I was just going by statistics in the M L S, but I would venture to say it was quite a few less in West Memphis.
I would too.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to say one thing, and then, you know, we have a new public works director, and I'm almost positive, yes, in, in conversation with him, I think we'll see a lot of changes that's gonna, to come, and, you know, like, it's all gonna take a little time, but, you know, just the conversation Mr. Vaughn and I have had, I can assure you, it's gonna change.
I agree, I definitely agree with Counselor Paul, I'm sure that you all, this, this council has done a great job, I want to say personally, working with this administration, and over a year and a half, this administration did some things that's been exceptional, that have been done the years, and all that we gotta do is just keep that train going, and we'll be okay, folks will be coming back, and we'll be building houses, doing the whole nine yards, so.
Mr. Mayor, before we close or adjourn, and it's kind of ironic that, that the city clerk handed out the Victor package today, because I have been getting numerous calls about mosquito problems within our city, and I actually didn't realize that I hadn't heard a truck or anything in our area, maybe I, maybe I hadn't been around there, but, but I'm gonna take this report with me and analyze and try to figure out how we get rid of some more mosquitoes.
Okay.
Anything else?
Make a motion, return.
All in favor, ah? Opposed?